Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, April the 3rd. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And on behalf of all of my colleagues here on council, we just want to thank everyone who was with us this evening and also those who were watching virtually. We're going to begin with an opening prayer by Marylina Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Padre celestial, nos hemos reunido para manejar los asuntos de nuestra ciudad. Al hacerlo le pedimos su orientación y comprensión. Oramos para que nuestra ciudad alcance un lugar de paz y seguridad, que nos mantenga fuera del peligro y bendecir a los que están en autoridad. Que el respeto sea clave en todos nuestros esfuerzos. Amén.
At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
The role.
Hey, cook.
Councilwoman Owens.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer. Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Present.
Councilwoman Spadola.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Nine present and four absent.
Thank you. Just a public note that Councilwoman Darby will be absent from this evening's meeting. Her legislation is going to be held in reference to the following legislation. An ordinance to amend Chapter forty-five of the city code to retain a third-party vendor to conduct a full operational and financial assessment of the water sewer fund and perform a feasibility study to establish an affordable water program. The next piece that's going to be held is an ordinance to amend Chapter forty-five of the city code to prohibit the Department of Finance from including arreages and unpaid water, sewage, and stormwater fees and related costs and monitions, actions against customers that are owner occupants. The next piece is an ordinance to amend Chapter forty-five to prohibit water service disconnections for non-payment of utility charges. And the final ordinance that would be held this evening is an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-four of the city code to provide for residential rent stabilization. At this time, we're going to have a reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, city council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at six o'clock PM. President Ernest M. Congo, the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Marylina Rivera.
Mr. President, I move the minutes to be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried.
At this time, we will have our committee report.
March tenth, twenty twenty-five, President and members of council, ladies and gentlemen, we are Public Safety Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero five entitled, "An Ordinance to Authorize and Approve an Agreement Between the City of Wilmington and Axon Enterprises, Inc. For Interview Room Equipment and Related Services." Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, members of the Public Safety Committee, those members present, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Spadola, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Oliver, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilwoman Darby.
Mr. President, I move that the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll have our city treasurer's report.
April third, twenty twenty-five, total investments, four hundred and ninety-five million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and sixty-three cents. Total cash on hand, seventeen million, seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Grand total, five hundred and twelve million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Submitted Dwayne Sim, city treasurer.
Mr. President, I move that the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
To move?
To move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now, we will have our recognition resolutions. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask Ms. Jacqueline Means and family to please meet me at the podium.
So Ms. Jacqueline Means and everyone who is here to support her, you're welcome to come up as well.
Oh, we would like to have Jacqueline's family to come and just stand here. You don't have to say anything. If you would like, okay, if you're shy, no problem. Well, first of all, I want to say that it is a privilege and my pleasure and an honor on this evening to present this resolution on behalf of myself and Councilmember Spadola. Before I read the resolution, I just want to say that we here in the city of Wilmington, especially city council, and I know many residents in the city feel the same way that we do regarding Jacqueline. She received a great honor recently. I was reading about it in the paper and I thought about it and I said, you know, even though she has had a lot of accomplishments, many achievements, but this one, I think, tops them all. So I did not want to miss an opportunity for her to know that her city and her councilwoman and her councilmen, we appreciate you as well. Okay. April the third, twenty twenty-five, sponsor, Councilmember Michelle Harley and Councilmember Spadola. It is the sense of city council to honor individuals, organizations, and events deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Michelle Harley and Councilmember Spadola recognizes Jacqueline Victoria Means, who was named Miss Caribbean U.S. twenty twenty-five. Let's give it up. Whereas Jacqueline holds a double major in management, information systems, and marketing, along with a minor in neuroscience, all while participating as a community engagement scholar. Despite her busy schedule, Jacqueline entered the Miss Caribbean U.S. twenty twenty-five competition on the twenty-fifth anniversary of the pageant, which celebrates Caribbean culture, beauty, and talent. Jacqueline proudly represented her Afro-Latino heritage. In addition to winning the title, she won first place in each category and was voted Miss Congeniality by the other contestants. Let's give it up. At the age of twelve, Jacqueline was concerned by the lack of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics opportunities, especially for girls of color in inner-city neighborhoods like hers. To expand access to these necessary skills, Jacqueline went to establish the Girls Empowerment STEM Initiative, an organization dedicated to bringing STEM training to young girls, including hands-on science experiments to make learning meaningful and engaging. Whereas Jacqueline has positively impacted over sixty-five hundred young girls. Let's give it up again. Through workshops, STEM experiments, and inspiring talks from prominent women like Congresswoman Lisa Blunt Rochester, Jacqueline has appeared on The Steve Harvey Show, The Today Show, Access Hollywood, The View, and more for her work. Her vision and her dedicated efforts have motivated a generation to believe that they can be successful professionals in the twenty-first century economy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington, that the Wilmington City Council is pleased to recognize Jacqueline Victoria Means for her Miss Caribbean U.S. twenty twenty-five title and to offer special appreciation for her ongoing work in STEM education. Job well done, Jacqueline. So, at this time, before we get comments from you, Jacqueline, maybe we'll have Councilmembers Spadola to come up and give some comments first, and then we'll have you to come up, okay? All right.
Councilmember Harley for inviting me up, and thank you, Jacqueline, for joining us. I'm seeing some proud parents there, very deservedly so. You know, we thank you for sharing your daughter, really with the city and the world for all her contributions that she's done. I've had the privilege of seeing Jacqueline in so many events, and she brings the same energy, warmth, and charisma that you'll hear right now, and you can just, it just vibrates off of her. You know, she has accomplishments that far exceed her age. I remember I asked her a couple of years ago, I don't know if you remember this, I asked you a couple of years ago if you wanted to be a guest bartender, and you said, "I'm only seventeen." I'm like, "Oh, I had no idea." I mean, you have the resume of a thirty-five-year-old. So, just congrats to you. Thank you to Councilmember Harley for highlighting one of Wilmington's finest, and your journey's just getting started at the same time. So, super excited to see where you go, so.
I cannot tell you how much I appreciate this. I could talk and talk for days, but I'll keep it short because people have other things to do. But thank you again to both of you so much. I want to share a little bit about what I intend to do with my year as Miss Caribbean U.S. twenty twenty-five. So, as Ms. Michelle briefly mentioned, I am all about empowering young inner-city girls, but especially girls of color like myself, to embrace the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. In fact, only twenty-nine percent of the STEM workforce is female, and an even lesser percentage are those that are minorities. So this encouragement is beyond incredibly vital. This year, I hope to raise my number of impacted girls from sixty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred, raise about ten thousand dollars for the organization, and increase the number of candidates who compete in next year's competition. So please feel free to keep up with me on my reign on all my various social media under STEM Queen DE, and hold me to it. If you see me slacking, message me, say something. But thank you again so much, and I really, really appreciate all the support, and I am excited to continue to make my city proud. Thank you so much.
Yes. First off, I just want to say congratulations on this award to you. I know the work that you've been doing in the city for a very long time. I remember those chess days way back when we were younger. But again, you are making Wilmington very proud, and you're doing work in a field that is extremely needed for minority youth right now, especially when DEI is under attack.
Don't get me started.
You pushing to create more opportunities for inner-city youth to be in that field is absolutely amazing, and I hope that everyone invests into the work that you're doing and helps you continue to expand your programming.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Council, the member Oliver. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Oliver, who has joined us.
Thank you so much.
I usually don't do this, but we just have to have your parents stand up and get a round of applause, just for the awesome job.
Stand up, y'all. I represented Puerto Rico in the pageant, and people were like, "You? Puerto Rico? Yes, y'all see my dad." So now, it should make a little more sense.
Well, the two of you have done just an outstanding job with your children. I remember our first chess on the square. Your brother Johnny, he just ran through, of course, everybody who was in his age bracket, but I think all the adults left there kicking rocks.
Didn't stand a chance.
Did not stand a chance against him. And just kudos to the two of you, just for, again, raising awesome children. And for you, Jacqueline, just doing what you've been doing. How old are you now, if you don't mind me asking?
You shouldn't ask a lady that.
I know.
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So you were twelve years old when we had our first chess.
It's been a decade, which is crazy to say.
Congratulations, so happy for you, so proud of you.
You. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilmember Hackett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you leave, Jacqueline, I just want to let you know, your parents, your grandfather, I'm a graduate of Delaware State University. I wouldn't be here without him. That's your mom would tell him, I sat in his class day in and day out, and he really took care of me as a young guy growing up from Wilmington, going down to Delaware State University. Probably didn't know what I wanted to do, but he took me under his wing, made me a teacher assistant. When I was trying to graduate, I needed a class, he said, "Hey, listen, I got you." So I know you got good people. Thank you so much. I appreciate you and your parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Jacqueline, we just want you to know that we love you and that we are very, very proud of you. And like I said, we don't want the world to be recognizing you without your city and your district councilwoman and the rest of Wilmington. So again, we love you and we're very, very proud of you. Okay, so it gives me a pleasure and it is my honor to call Pastor Guy and her youth and anyone else that's here to support her, Pastor Margaret Guy. Making their way to the podium, I just want to say, this is, again, like I said, another privilege, it's honor, pleasure to present this recognition to a very, very worthy leader, community leader, and her children. And I want to say that when I think of Pastor Guy, I think of when I first got started as a city council representative. She was one of the first community leaders that I met that reached out and had a need. And a newly councilmember, I really didn't fully understand all the workings of this position, but one thing that I did know was that I wanted to help Pastor Guy because I saw the impact that she was making in the community. And the thing that she has shared with me was the concerns that she had about the building that she was living, working in with the youth. And right away, I wanted to leverage whatever relationships that I had that could be of help. And of course, I got started, as she knows, I'm not going to go into all the details, but I worked with those within the city on the administration side. Mayor Prezicki, he was willing to support and willing to help. And not only that, but I also reached out to some of the businessmen over on the east side to see how they could help. I do believe that in this position, we should leverage all of our relationships to be able to help those in need and help those that we represent. So I just want to say that I'm just so honored to present this to her on this evening for her fourteenth year, and I also want to say that the work that she's doing is intervention. Our children today need great leaders, leaders of integrity, leaders that care, and leaders that are willing to truly mentor them. And this is what Pastor Guy does. She is just not a regular youth center that's going on with her. She's depositing gems. She's depositing life skills. She's depositing spiritual gems, and that's what I call true intervention, because if we can get our children at this age with intervention, then with prevention, I'm sorry, we don't have to worry about intervention. So if we can prevent and we can get them early, then we don't have to do intervention with them. April the third, twenty twenty-five, sponsor, Councilmember Michelle Harley. Whereas it is the sense of city council to honor individuals, organizations, and events deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Michelle Harley recognizes Stop the Violence Prayer Chain Foundation for fourteen years of service to the Wilmington community. Let's give it up for fourteen years. After witnessing an increase in gun violence in the city she loves, Minister Margaret Guy founded the Stop the Violence Prayer Chain Foundation in twenty-eleven. The organization serves low-income, at-risk children who have lost loved ones to gun or domestic violence in Wilmington, Newcastle County, and surrounding areas. Most of the children in the program started at four years old, while others are college-aged. The program has guided many of the children through difficult times and helped them avoid engaging in illegal activities. Some have gone on to earn honors and perfect attendance awards at school. Others have enrolled in higher education, enlisted in the military, or become youth ministers. Seven have joined the praise dance team. And whereas the children take an active role in community events such as anti-violence marches, food delivery for the homeless and disabled, initiatives for younger children, and fundraisers to support travel to other states on the east coast and to Canada. The Stop the Violence Prayer Chain Foundation has assisted STEM programs. These dedicated students have stayed the course in service to their community, and many remain active in the program even after relocating to other places. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington, that this council is pleased to recognize the Stop the Violence Prayer Chain Foundation on fourteen years of devoted community service. We look forward to their continued contributions to the city of Wilmington and the surrounding area. Let's give it up for Stop the Violence and Pastor. Coming out on tonight, and again, it is a pleasure, it is my honor, and it is a privilege tonight to present this to you and to all your children, and my gosh, I didn't know it was that many. Oh, my goodness. So, you're at sixty-eight? Well, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. You are a partner with us with helping to prevent, to prevent our children from getting into the wrong hands and into the wrong activities. So at this time, I'm going to let you come up and share some comments. Thank you. Okay, all right, sure.
I just wanted to say a couple of words. I wasn't expecting this, but Minister Guy, I met Minister Guy in twenty fifteen after losing one of my sons to gun violence, and she was passing out flyers, and I was like, "This is about my son." So I stood out there with her. Ever since then, I've been a part of her program, been there off and on. My son is also a part of the program. If you will only see him standing up on Sundays dancing with one of the other ministers there. And I just wanted to say, we all appreciate you, we all appreciate you. You give these kids an opportunity to see other things besides what's here in Wilmington, and I know they appreciate that they see so much more than what goes on in their neighborhoods. I've seen her feed other families, reaching out for food. I've seen her just, I don't know, just giving the kids different opportunities. I've seen so many come and go, going off to high school. My daughter, she's actually graduating this year as well. And yeah, I just, to the kids, I just say, just stay positive and stay in the program and stay out of trouble like they do. Yeah, she's a good person, and I appreciate you. Yeah, she's a good person and I appreciate you.
I just want to say, this is such a blessing. And I just want to give honor to God, President Trippi. And I just want to say, this is not about me, it's about all of us. It's about God and all of us. These are all of our children. It takes a village. And without help from everybody here and everybody that supports us financially and supports us in other ways, this wouldn't be possible because I couldn't do it by myself. So it's teamwork. It's actually teamwork. And Michelle Harley, Councilwoman Michelle, I appreciate you for recognizing, when you said, I said, "I wanted the kids to be recognized," you know, because it's not about me. We have children that are, we have children that are graduating with honors. We have children that's going into service. We have children, and none of our children in this program have been in trouble with the law, period. No record, no nothing. We're trying to keep it that way. And I'm old school, so I don't reward bad behavior. And they know if, you know, and we, these children have been from Florida to Canada and out to the Midwest. Basketball Hall of Fame, Football Hall of Fame, the White House, they've been there. We've done fundraisers. We've even, city council has even helped us provide so these children could go out and see. So as they grow up and they have children, they can say, "Wow, we're going to take our children here. This is something positive." And I'm just lost for words right now because this is such an honor and a blessing. And I just pray that God continues to give us the strength to keep working with these children in the city and all the surrounding areas. Amen.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Minister Guy, we go back a long way. I remember when you first started, that little location on the east side, and you asked me to come in and speak to the kids. And my own child has participated, Vinnie, in a lot of your programs, traveled. You know, you open doors and opportunities so these children see that there's something more than their city streets and where they live and, you know, and the violence unfortunately that they are exposed to in some areas. So for me, it has always been a privilege to support you when you call, whether it's monetary or being present to come to your events. And a lot of these children, I remember when they were a lot younger, and many have gone through your program. So I want to thank you, you know, as a mother of a child who participated. And these children, it takes a village, they are our children. So for me, it is always an honor to support you as you're supporting them. Thank you for all that you do.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Minister Guy. I do recall when I first got a chance to meet you over on the east side, and then the many times that you've invited me out to come to different prayer events and be with your children, be with the children, and all of the things that you did, and when I needed you in my district. Because all that stuff was happening on the east side, but then you had to come to the west side. And you came, and y'all came in full force. It was amazing. And I just want to say, I was so surprised about all of the things you do, that this is not some nine-to-five type of situation, that all the many times you've made me aware of things that were going on and that you've actually had to take care of things in the middle of the night or whatever, someone needed help, that you are not focused on any side of town, that you made me aware when some of my constituents was in need, but they didn't know how to reach me. And so I just want to thank you. I thank you for all that you do. To me, it was started with the children, but it's grown to so much more, and I just appreciate you for it.
Owens?
Yes. How are you? I just want to say, usually when we see each other, it's after a tragedy. After someone has lost their life, someone's been harmed in our city, blood's been spilled on our streets. And during that time, you bring together the community, you bring together faith leaders to pray for healing in our city, something that is truly needed, something that you've been doing for years. I've joined you on many marches. But also listening to the kids and listening to how they want to also save our city as well too, and giving them a home for their voices to grow is something that is so critical as they develop into leaders themselves. And I know you said it's not about you, but we want to give you your flowers for the hard work that you do in the community. That means so much to so many people. And I think this is the most people I've ever seen come up here. And it's a testimony to who you are, the type of person you are, and you reaching back out into the community. So I definitely look forward to seeing you on more happy terms, but also thank you for the work that you do during some of our toughest days in the city.
Yes, she's like, "You better say something." I can't really say anything that hasn't already been said, Ms. Margaret. Just thank you for everything that you do. I know every time that you call, and it's an ask of, you know, something from the city, something from me personally, something from like the family business, I know that, like you said, it's never about you. It's all about those people who have come today to support you. It's all about the children. You're just a presence in our city like not too many people have been able to establish. So just thank you again, you know, if we can ever help, we're always going to be there for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I did get you some flowers. I'm going to let her present them.
Oh, thank you. And I just wanted, I can't recognize him, Ronald Knord, our vice president. He's very quiet, he's in the background, but he does a lot of work for us and the children. And I just want to thank all the children, all the parents, and just thank everybody. It's touching, and we still have a lot of work to do. We're not done. God is not through with us yet. Amen?
Amen. Amen.
So as they are clearing the podium area, I'm going to ask for Councilmember Hackett?
I'm holding the door, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, sir.
Can I get Lamar Mason up to the front, please?
Yeah.
You got it? Thank you. I had to ask Mar, did he want anybody else to come up here to support him? So if you want to come up here, you can support him. But I'll be honest with you, a lot of people in here, that's his family, so we know he got a whole village behind him. You know, for me, I'll be honest with you, this is my first resolution to recognize somebody. The council would tell you, I've been telling, like, "Can I get on the books? I need to get on the books." And, you know, I'm just so happy to be sharing this with my brother Lamar Mason. You know, sometimes people don't get their flowers when they're here, you know? So I'm so happy that we could be here today and give you your flowers. You know, I saw you when you started Check Rock outside, you know, until where it's at today, at the fill house, at every single gym in Delaware, you know? Like, it's amazing, but I think sometimes people look at it and they say, "Hey, listen, he's only just teaching basketball." And that's not the case. You have been a safe haven to so many kids. The kids that you might not even know need you, that show up every day and you might be saving their lives. You know, you're making an impact that, you know, you might not be able to see today, but I know later down the line, you'll be able to see. So, you know, I'm so happy to be here at this moment. So let me get started, you know, because I know I'm on a time crunch. I know. Whereas it is since a city council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilman Hackett recognizes this Check Rock League and Lamar Mason as one such organization. Where it was founded in 2015, Lamar Mason, the Check Rock League, is the ultimate high school basketball experience with a challenging league designed to help build character, skills, hard work, and focus. It helps players learn defense, passing, ball handling, shooting, finishing at the basket. In addition, they learn to communicate, work together effectively on both ends of the court. Players develop coordination, agility while applying their skills in real game situations. You know, I always tell people Lamar Mason is the best with real game situations, and I'm pretty sure Rob Wright and some other NBA players like Boe Holland would be able to tell you today. Whereas Check Rock League is entering its 10th season, it continues to offer the best players experience with other top-level competitors. And it is a great social media platform for opportunities for athletes and their unique needs. The Girls Run It program has become the best basketball league in the area for women. Come on now, give them a round of applause for that. How they don't get support, and this brother right here said, "You know what? I'm going to make sure that the women, our high school women, get the opportunity to showcase their talent." And you got one of the best in the state of Delaware right now that you're training, which is G.G. Banks. So I'm just listening. I don't know, I could go on for days about the work that you are doing in our community. So once again, I want to say thank you. Now therefore, being resolved by the city, by council of the city of Wilmington, that this council is pleased to recognize and celebrate the remarkable achievement of the Check Rock League and extend congratulations to the teams, the coaches, because I see a lot of coaches in here, the staff, photographer, Bree, I see you right there, you take every picture I didn't see. I appreciate you, you even got some of me. Thank you so much. And all those who contribute to the success. Job well done. Thank you so much, my brother, and I appreciate you for everything that you do. Going to let you speak here. All right, now, we'll be brief, all right? Go ahead, do your thing.
Alex Connaught said everything, ran it down. But it's really, it's truly an honor, man. I've been, you know, I established Check Rock League in Check Rock 2015, ups and downs. But at the end of the day, it's one thing that only kept me going, it was just really the kids within the community. I'm a Wilmington kid myself, and I understand that basketball, you know, that's the way how I communicate, but it's also an outlet, you know what I mean? It saves lives, it saved my life. So one of the biggest things is, you know, I encourage a lot of, I encourage a lot of players to, just don't let anyone tell you what you can't do, you know what I mean? People were saying that I couldn't do certain stuff and couldn't build what I built, but we're here today, and it don't stop here. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes. Again, yeah, move off to the side. Again, I just want to say, it's been a common theme tonight. Sports and athletics is a safe haven for a lot of kids, especially in the inner city. But it also offers so much more than the athletic side of it. It offers the opportunity to develop your basic skills, how to communicate, something that we need, that is so critical to our everyday, whether it's professional, whether you're in a boardroom or on a court. And the work that you've been doing in the community, we see it all across our city. We have amazing stars, we have some in the room tonight. But the work that you're doing is so critical to bringing the spotlight back on Wilmington in a positive way. So again, congratulations on a decade of work. I look forward to the next decade.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, Mar, man, you're going to be one of those OGs that the kids, that this younger generation is going to come up and thank years from now. And not only for the basketball talent, just for giving them life skills and showing them that it's sometimes, you know, it's bigger than basketball and there's more than basketball out here. So I just look at you, man, as just a legend in the making. And I've known you since you were a young guy, and just to see who you are now and who you've become and the kind of support that you have, I'm just looking forward to some more great things from you and your entire crew. So, man, just keep up the great work, let us know how we can help, you know, we're always going to be there for you. But congratulations. Thank you, brother.
Appreciate you.
Everybody that came out tonight to support Mar Mason, you know, one of the things I always tell him, listen, continue to dream, you know, the kids are watching him constantly. Every day he shows up, he's showing up. I didn't see Mar pick up kids, drop them all to the gym, take them home, feed them, and more. So, you know, like, at the end of the day, we need more Mar Masons here in our community because a lot of times, people have been saying every day, "What do we have for our kids?" Well, we got Check Rock. And these kids are showing up. I'm going to be honest with you, I go to Check Rock, I've been coached in the league, I've been able to sponsor, been able to see so many kids show up. Every high school is at the fill house on those days, you know? So we got an opportunity to really build with our community and our kids, and I'm just happy that you are able to build that platform for me to be able to show up and support you. So thank you so much, thank everybody for coming out. If you came with Mar Mason tonight, meet me out there because we taking a picture, all right? God bless.
Councilwoman Cabrera, you may be excused.
To the next presentation, thank you.
Councilmember Spadola?
Yeah? Can you join me?
Fell out there. I just fell out there. Slipped on the floor. The rest of it... They don't have a form. One, two, three, four. Oh, six, seven, no other. He's like, "Wait, everybody's gone."
Look, I started PT yesterday, so they're going to give me public clearance to drive.
We're going to ask any council members who are in council chambers to please return to your seats so we can have a quorum. Okay. Councilmember Spadola?
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy tonight, along with Councilmember McCoy, to honor truly one of Wilmington's finest. I think when we talk about police officers, people throw that word out, "finest." But I think those who have gotten to know Captain Rosio truly mean it when we call him Wilmington's finest. You can, I'm going to read this at the end, but I guess I'll just start with my comments. But I think I, I can't remember the first time I had the privilege of meeting him, but I, you know, being at large, attending various civic association meetings in all different neighborhoods, you know, Captain Rosio always presented himself the same way. And he was always, always met well. People always appreciated his comments, his candor, and, you know, I think the times that I've reached out to him from constituent complaints, he's just always been on top of it, and I think he's instilled that ethos in his people. And I think the leadership that he brought to the unit, even though he's leaving us to go to the HR division, I have no doubt we will see that leadership continue and very... And very, and you know, I look forward to following his career. He's got a couple of years left, he's not going anywhere. Maybe the stars will align in 20 years when Chief Campos is ready to move on. Or maybe there's a beach town waiting for you. But, you know, definitely looking forward to calling you chief one day, and it will surely be well deserved. But for those who don't know, let me just read this, I'm not gonna read all of it, but just give you some highlights of his background. Graduated from the academy in 2010. He was first assigned to patrol, served in the uniformed services division, deep platoon. He was later transferred to the drug organized crime and vice unit before being promoted to sergeant. He went on to serve as patrol supervisor on the Safe Streets Task Force. He was promoted to lieutenant and served as watch commander in deep platoon. He was also a member of the crisis management tactical team, where he was there for five years. And in 2023, when all of us on the West Side got to know him, he was promoted to the rank of captain and was assigned to Sector 3, where he's responsible for uniformed operations on Wilmington's West Side. His dedication is evident in his service to the citizens in the city he loves. I think you see Brown Town showing up for him, for him tonight. He's married, three kids, so be resolved by the City of Council. We are pleased to recognize Captain Rosario. And he never gets offended, by the way, when you mispronounce his name. He never does. Happy to recognize him for his many accomplishments and dedication of service to the City of Wilmington. Job well done. I recognize Chief Campos and Captain Akil and various other police officers. Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you so much, Councilmember, Councilman Spadola. I actually called to make certain that I got a chance to be on the resolution, because we were like-minded. I know that this is a promotion. I know that we should all be happy. UC 6th District is full effect. We had a great sector captain. He was so great, he became chief. And then he replaced him with Captain Rosario. And I was like, oh my God, how'd you find someone like that good? And we were just, to me, Captain Rosario was the cheat code. Like, he basically was, I could basically send him somewhere and just give him just a little bit of information. Please be, please be gentle, please be assertive, please have empathy. Like, he knew exactly how to deal with whoever I needed him to speak with in the community. And you gotta love him for that, and the fact that he was able to be that, every man for everyone is just, is phenomenal. And as you could see from 6th District, we just wanted to make certain that we got a chance to say thank you again before you move on to your next, your next role. So I just wanted to make certain that I made that comment, tell you how much we care about you, how much we expect you to do great things in your new role. And that's, that's basically, because I told you I'm not gonna cry up here. I said, but that's it, and I just want to say thank you so much for caring about Wilmington as much as you have. Thank you so much.
Greetings, everyone. And to Trippie, Council President, and all the council members, and the police, the police chief, and I'm not gonna forget you. I'm Bishop Dr. Doris Redding, and I'm president of the 6th District Neighborhood Planning Council. And we are honored that we had Captain Rosario as a team player with us and collaborated. And his passion that he had and his compassion for people that, he would go door to door and meet the residents in the community. And whatever problem we had, it was right here on the text, you know, communication back and forth. And he was especially trying to make sure that the 6th District was safe and that the residents got along with each other. And we really appreciate what he brought to the table, even to have people to respect the officers more, you know? Because it was collaboration with City Council, with Brown Town President Doreen Robinson, and with Yvonne Murray, Hedgeville President. So we had a lot of, and Camby Park with Norma Ramirez. So we all had teamwork working together, and we had ring doorbells put in and so that the people could be able to upload to the website, the police website, any crime that was happening. So we really collaborated together, and we're gonna miss that because we have to build new relations and teamwork. So we'd like to, from the 6th District Neighborhood Planning Council, we'd like to give this to you, because you've been a star and a gem for us. Okay, it says excellence awarded to Captain Matthew Rosario for demonstrating integrity and inspiring others to perform at their best. We are, we are a better team because of you. Bishop Dr. Doris Redding and the 6th District Neighborhood Planning Council, 2025.
And this is the humbling part. I can't thank you enough, Councilman Spadola, Councilman McCoy, all the other council people out here, my community leaders that came, my brave colleagues, Chief Campos, one of my mentors, Captain Akil. And I know for those that don't know the Community Engagement Unit, led by Sergeant Banks, Officer Flores, Prattz, and I know Officer Harmon is my West Side Community Engagement Unit officer. I have thoroughly in love the last two and a half years that I've spent as the Sector 3 captain. But this, this has been, this is more than me. This is a team, and I think you said it best, Bishop. I can't do this without everybody. And I have gotten so much perspective, not only as a police officer and with this profession, how we can impact a community over the years. It's been, it's been truly humbling. I've learned so much about how much policing community need to work with each other in order to push forward. Everything I, Bishop, said about team, everything, every success in my life, from my family to my Wilmington Police family, to the community, family that I have in the community, that has built me up. And I know not everybody has the same opportunities, but there's something to that. And sometimes when, when others don't have that same opportunity, that's where we all come together and we build, we build each other up. I, Chief Campos was my, was in my academy back in 2010. He was my master corporal back then, and he was my drill instructor. And he ran me a lot, and he pushed me to do great things. And I read this at one of the last community events that I went to, and I think it's worth me reading here, if you have a second. But it hangs on my wall in my office now, and I'll tell you why this is relevant in a second. But it's from Steve Covey, he's an American educator. He wrote Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. But he said, "Policing is one of America's most noble professions. The actions of any police officer in an incident can impact an individual for life and even a community for generations. Given this realization, every police officer must be centered on what's important. Service, justice, fundamental fairness are the foundational principles on which every police action must be grounded. The nobility of policing demands the noblest of character." And I think I've lived this so far in my short career as a police officer, about how much we can impact the community, both for better or for worse. Chief Campos gave me this back when I was learning how to do the job, and he still pushes me in this way. And this is in my new role within the academy, or within the human resources is the academy, and this is what I want to continue to push to the recruits. For selfish reasons, we're gonna be starting an academy up here. And, and for those that live in the community, please let me know who you think would be best to serve us as a community. I cannot thank you guys enough. This is, this is, this award is for all of us, this recognition is for all of us. But this has been truly an honor, and thank you all. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cabrera, followed by Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, there are really no words to describe Captain Rosario. He's above and beyond. Text messages come through to give us updates as what's happening. We have worked close together with the Lower Hilltop Project, with the land bank, as we've been repurposing the vacant properties there. And it's been such an amazing teamwork, because you got the Latin American Community Center, you got the land bank with the properties, you have the residents that have built relationships with our community engagement officers and with Captain Rosario, the businesses that you've visited and spoken to, so that they see this is what we're trying to do. And the police work that has happened in terms of investigations and, and really the crackdown on drugs and illegal activities. But it's truly been about the relationship building. I would, you know, talk to Officer Flores and says, have you heard from so-and-so? And he said, no, I haven't talked to her in a while. I said, I haven't gotten any calls anymore. So I had a resident there that would always call me to tell me what's going on, so I could report it to the police, because obviously she was scared, she didn't want to report what was happening. But that said to me that the relationships have been built and fortified. So now those residents aren't calling me, asking me to report to the police. They have a relationship with Officer Flores and, and all the others that you have over there. So we're looking forward to working with Captain Gleam, and he's got big shoes to fill. But I just want to thank you personally for keeping me engaged with what's happening in that community as we continue to work to transform things. And, and we really hope that, that that spirit that you bring to the department, that Captain, that Chief Campos did when he was captain in that area, that that passes on to the new recruits, because those are the type of police officers we want out there. Community-minded, engaged, that they care. That's the reputation, and that's the, the reputation that police should have, not the opposite of what happens and what we see on a, on a regular basis. So we really love you, is all I can say. And I'm looking forward to working with you in your new role.
Captain, I'm gonna make this brief. I just wanted to say the 7th District appreciates you greatly. I don't know, I know many residents have expressed it to you, but you really do mean a lot, as all of us have expressed is what you mean. I remember the first time I met you was on a peace march. And that, you know, I think sets a tone for the relationship that you have with the entire West Side. And I really would like to thank your family, because you were, I think it, it doesn't get said enough, you were really always a guardian officer. Like, I remember I would talk to you, you would say, hey, I'm at my kid's soccer game, and you would still talk. Or, you know, when I get done at soccer game, I'll call you back, you know? Or you could be at the beach. So, you know, you, Officer Flores, Banks, Harmon, you all do an excellent job on the West Side. I look forward to that continued service, as I used to do with Captain Campos walking the West Side. So I appreciate you all. Hopefully we can, with the new academy, get that same spirit. Because you guys really do make Wilmington happen, so I look forward to your new role. Thank you.
Councilmember Field?
Yeah, Officer Rosario, thank you. You obviously clearly deserve this award, as the turnout shows. And it's been fun working with you. Probably called you 100 times over the last two years. And, and I think if you ever get tired of your police career, you'd probably be a good city council person, because you are like, you know, a wizard at constituent services. And every time I've called you, you've, I've told you about an issue, you've gone like above and beyond by seven steps. Sometimes I have to actually ask you to slow down and not, not go as hard. But it just, I hadn't really interacted with many police officers before being on city council. And from Chief Campos, who had your job before, and then through you, and then basically every other police officer I've interacted with, I've been just very impressed with the professionalism of the, everybody that I've dealt with, that's had your position, and that you've worked with. And that's a testament to the leadership of you and Chief Campos and others before you.
Thanks.
Also, first, I just want to say congratulations. And secondly, I do want to apologize, because I am one of those people who have butchered your name for the last several years. I'm just figuring out tonight how it was really pronounced. But just, I mean, your name has, has rung bells throughout the city in a great way for so long. Like, I've never heard anything but positive attributions when they were talking about you and how you served the city. And, and really, it really shows in that you have your constituents, the people who you serve and live here, come to be a part of this recognition. Like, I don't think that I've ever seen that before. So, and I think that just, that speaks volumes of who you are and how, and what you mean to, to your community and to the city and to the police force. I mean, there were so many officers when we came in, I thought somebody was in trouble. I didn't know what was going on. I didn't pay attention to who was being recognized, but now I know why. And just, you know, good luck with your, with, you know, your next endeavor. I'm sure you're gonna do a great job. And like someone mentioned earlier, whoever is going to replace you has some huge shoes to fill. But I'm sure you're gonna be there to kind of keep them, keep them focused and keep them in the right direction. So again, just thank you and congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
All right, with that, it is a little bit past, I'm sorry, Chief Campos?
Good evening, Council President, council members and residents of the City of Wilmington. They pushed me up here to say a few words, but I feel, I feel like a proud big brother. You know, I've, I've known Captain Rosario when he started his career. I hired him actually in 2010, and I trained him as a master corporal, and I followed his career. And, you know, from the moment that he was in that police academy with, I believe it was 30-something recruits, you know, he rose to the top. He made sure that all of his academy mates were physically and academically ready and spiritually, emotionally. He was the first one in, last one out, and I seen that early on, early on in his career. And then as he, you know, went through the ranks, and I was promoted in 2023 to this position, I promoted, one of my, my first promotions was Captain Rosario. And it was because of what you've all seen in the last two and a half years. I've been seeing that for the last 12 years. And, and I got some pushback because of his relative experience. You know, he only had 12 years, and he's becoming a captain, and that's pretty much unheard of. But, you know, I was told a long time ago that leadership has no age, has no, has no limits. And when you recognize someone that has those leadership skills, you have to move that person up and promote them, no matter how much time they have on the job. So as you seen, Captain Rosario take care of the community, you know, it was just another chapter in his life that I needed him for. As you all know, this is my selfish position now of taking Matt from you. It's because of, of what I seen in him. And we have a very difficult challenge ahead of us when it comes to recruitment. We need to have that passion and that energy that Matt brings to this city and to this police department to bring that to the focus of getting new and young officers to our department to serve our city. And, and it's all about a succession plan, right? At some point, we all have to move on, and we have to continue to develop leaders. And just like when Matt came over to the West Side, he was relatively unknown, and then he became loved, as you see with the community members showing up here. All I ask is you give Captain Gleam a chance. He does have some big shoes to fill, but he is also very responsive. May not be as personable as Matt, but we gotta work on him, and we'll get him there as well. But it's about developing leaders, just like Matt. And he's got a new challenge to bring new members to the department, and then to continue that spirit of community policing. And in, in the room tonight, we have the, the leader, I guess, of community policing, which someone who I learned from, who was a mentor to me, was Captain Akil. And I learned so much from him, and, and I pass that on to the police officers as well. And I need Matt or Captain Rosario to be able to push that to the new members that are coming to the City of Wilmington to be able to serve our residents and understand that no matter what the color of your skin, you gotta treat everyone with respect and dignity. Even those people who break the law, they need that respect and that dignity when we do have to enforce the law. So I know Matt is gonna do a great job with that, to instill that, that, that spirit of community policing and to treat everyone equally. So I look forward to his, to see him in his new role, and he's got a big, a big challenge, because I'm gonna hold him accountable to make sure we get our ranks back up to where they need to be. So thank you.
Because of the time, we do have to make a motion to extend public comment. Nobody hasn't started yet, but it is.
Motion to extend public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. So before we go into public comment, I just want to acknowledge some sympathy resolutions from council members. From Councilmember Cabrera, sympathy resolutions for William Dale Anderson, Detective Joseph Anthony Oskona, Georgia Ann Bernard. From Councilmember Oliver, sympathy resolutions for John Williams, Shirley Stewart, Leon Walker, Mary Sol Baez, Blair Clark, Hazel Brown. Walker, Mary Sol Baez, Blair Clark, Hazel Brown. Member Owens, a sympathy resolution for Ronnie Wise. And from Councilmember Spadola, sympathy resolutions for Paul Garwood and Lieutenant Greg Shelton. Our first person for public comment that I'm going to ask to come forward is Dora Williams. Is Dora Williams still with us? All right. Thank you for joining us. Please take your time coming up. Please watch your step. You may come up to the podium. Please watch your step when you come up to the podium. And also, please remember to introduce yourself. We do have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds remaining, I will give you a friendly reminder. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, our President Congo and all of his colleagues. Thank you so much for this opportunity. And I just have a little bit that I want to say, just not a lot of words you can say after an opportunity to watch an event like we had this evening. It was awesome. I didn't even think I was at a county, I mean, a city council meeting. It was just awesome. So one of the things we like, I'd like to say today is that, and this has just been, I guess, something that is indicative of what has happened today, and it is, is that we cannot depend on the eloquence of bureaucracy. We cannot depend on the excellence of academics, but we have to depend on the conscience of man. And this has been just an awesome opportunity to witness that when it happens. And the one thing I do, another thing I want to say is, and I want to read it because I don't want to miss anything, is today, our 25 million people in some 50 countries around the world have been uprooted within their country by conflicts and human rights violations. An equal number or more are displaced as a result of mutual disasters, natural disasters, or infrastructural projects. And I am a part of Delaware Concerned Residents for Environmental Justice. Environmental justice knows no district lines or any kind of state lines or anything. And I am part of Sam's Church. And one thing I'm asking is, is that we recognize the displacement that is caused by the homeless and also actions sometimes that we do. And one of the things that I am asking, and I think that all those that are in the same alignment with me, is us, is is that the benches be returned to the church. And I see this as an, as a governmental entity that sees that as that is important. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Deacon Earl Tate? And please remember to introduce yourself, and I'll give you a 30-second reminder when your time is almost up. Please watch your step.
I'm here to represent the people. Now, what I got to say is to, is to all of the politicians that is down in DC and all, we got to say that you represent the people. So stand up, take your heads out your butts, and stand up and, and, and represent us. Represent us, the people, the people who put you there. The people, the people that, that, that stood up, that stood up for you when, when, when you took this step out. So you supposed to represent us. Don't be afraid, don't be afraid to speak up and say what you got to say, because you supposed to represent us, the people, the people of the United States. Not, not, not be afraid, not be afraid of this one, not be afraid to say that or this, because we have the right for freedom of speech, freedom, freedom to speak up for what we believe in. Because, 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 see, like, we got, we got children and, and more children that look, that, that looking up to us. So, so like, so like, we got, we got to stand up for the rights of the people. And we got to let them know that, let them know that, hey, we represent the people. And if you're not here to represent the people, then you don't deserve to be here. You deserve to sit down and, 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 and get somebody up there that is going to represent the people. And, and that's not all. That's not all. But because, because we, 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 we the hard worker people. We, we are the people that build up the United States. So come on, stand up, stand up and, and, and defend us. Because the, the DPNL bill, them went up sky high, they ought to, they ought to know that poor people and, and elderly people cannot, cannot, cannot afford to pay that, pay that, it's such a, it's such a bill that, 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 that they, that they send out there every month. So, so like, so like, so like, we got to do something about this.
You have 30 seconds.
And got to, and, and got, and got to make things right, right for the people. That is all I have to say for now.
All right, thank you. Next virtually, we have Chantel Newman. WI10, is Mr. Newman still with us? All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to legislative business. With note for council members, just a friendly reminder that pursuant to our council rules for legislative matters, the sponsor is entitled to speak first and last during the debate. Each council member may speak twice for up to five minutes each time. First, we have Councilmember McCoy.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present on your behalf.
Resolution 25-014, Agenda Number 0024. Whereas in accordance with Section 2-104 of the City Charter, city council shall provide for such committees as deemed necessary.
I move that this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President. So this resolution is basically making changes to the standing committees. It looks like we will be removing Councilmember Letitia Bracy from the Intergovernmental Standing Committee, and we will be adding Councilmember Oliver and Councilman Johnson to the Intergovernmental Standing Committee, with Councilman Johnson, Councilmember Johnson being the vice chair. And then we will also be removing Councilmember Johnson from the Health, Environmental, and Aging and Disability Standing Committee. That is all.
Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Owens?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-015, Agenda Number 0025. Whereas the 13 members of Wilmington City Council take an oath of office to faithfully fulfill their positions, which calls upon them to formulate policy and legislation, vote on legislation, adopt an annual...
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, this resolution will create an opportunity for us to send something down to Dover, asking for us to be added, like the caucuses down there, to be added, like both chambers have caucuses down there. This will allow us an opportunity to meet as a council body and to discuss matters at hand that move the city forward. And then it's, gives us the opportunity to get on, on the same page with said legislation. I want to thank the 10 co-sponsors that I have, who have joined in to sponsor this, and I hope that everyone will sign on as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I appreciate Councilman Owens. This is one of his first big pieces, and I think this is, last session, we discussed this, but this is critical. I don't, the public may not understand how difficult it is to, to serve the city when we have a lot of big issues, especially with housing, crime, and we can't discuss these effectively, we're not able to, without violating FOIA. We can't just all get in a room and hash out policy ideas. We can't even have a retreat without it being an official meeting. So those are the things that, you know, we're not doing backroom deals. We just need a way to be able to discuss policy. And so I appreciate Councilman Owens. And once we pass this, I hope 13 members are on it, we got to then full court press with this and the other ordinance we have. We got to get this passed to Dover by June 30th.
Councilmember Hackett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say also, thank you so much, Councilmen Owens, for bringing this to light. You know, I think this is very needed, especially in just different conversations, you know, even when we're talking about our poverty tax assessment, you know, had Councilwoman Willar be able to really sit down and discuss to me what is really going on. So it's really an opportunity for us to be able to learn from each other at a better, higher frequency. So, you know, I'm just happy that, you know, we get the opportunity to be able to go. We also mentioned in the committee, and I hope we can move forward and figure out a way where we can bring a lobbyist on to be able to continue to work down in Dover for us, so that we can make some of this happen. So, thank you.
Councilmember Spadola, followed by Councilmember Harley?
Thank you, Council President. I think similar to my resolution later on the docket, we're basically asking the state to be consistent with how they view the City of Wilmington. And I, I think frankly, they should, all municipalities should be accorded the same privileges as the state. Not even privilege, just be consistent. Whatever the state is doing, the other municipalities should have the same prerogatives. Yes, please add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I already shared my sentiments in the committee meeting, and I just wanted to say I am proud to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. And yes, it has been a conversation over two, three terms, and I'm happy to be able to support it. And thanks again, I'm Councilmember Owens.
Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo what my council member said, and it's, I'm glad, we have a new council member coming in and doesn't, didn't mind taking a charge on this, because we've been talking about it for a while. So kudos to Councilmember Owens, and it's a pleasure to be a co-sponsor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask council, there are a couple of members who aren't on here. I would ask council, or maybe the sponsor can reach out to those council members to see if they do want to be sponsored, so all 13 of us can be on there. I think that makes a difference when, when it's down in Dover. And with that, seeing no more hands raised, Councilmember McCoy?
Now, actually, I just took account, looks like there's only one name missing. But I just want to say, I'm so glad that you're able to put this piece of legislation through, Kobe. I'm sorry, Councilman Owens. And I am glad that I'm also a co-sponsor. Are we allowed to add a co-sponsor after the vote?
You are here.
You are here.
You're already on.
No, 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 I'm talking about the person, there's only one person missing.
Oh, remember you.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I didn't know whether or not we're allowed to add a co-sponsor after the vote.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Owens?
We have five, that's, yeah, that's still good.
All right. Any final words besides that, Councilmember?
Again, just thank you, everyone, and I look forward to helping get this passed down in Dover.
All right, clerk, please call for the roll.
Member Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second Agenda item number 0030.
Ordinance 25-011, Agenda Number 0030, an ordinance constituting amendment number three to the fiscal year 2025, operating budget being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 24-016.
Reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance constituting amendment number three to the fiscal year 2025, operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 24-016.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance, agenda item number 0031, to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-012, Agenda Number 0031, an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 of the City Code to revise fees for ambulance and related services provided by the Fire Department.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 10 of the City Code to revise fees for ambulance and related services provided by the Fire Department.
Second reading of the ordinance?
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present, Agenda Item Number 0032.
Resolution 25-016, Agenda Number 0032, whereas Section 2-204 of the City, Wilmington City Charter, requires that city council meet at least twice every month. And whereas Section 2-204 of the Charter also permits additional meetings to be held when requested, requested by the mayor, president of city council, or majority of city council in accordance with the procedural rules of city council.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President. This particular resolution was discussed in detail at the committee meeting. However, it's being presented by city council for council's review and approval. It urges the Delaware General Assembly to enact this legislation, which will amend City Charter 2-204 to exclude August and December from the twice-a-month meeting requirement, except when a meeting is requested by the mayor, president of city council, or a majority of the city council. Also, like many other public institutions, the City of Wilmington is experiencing staffing shortages and ongoing financial concerns. And so therefore, we would like to present this along with some of the other legislation that is going down to the General Assembly. And also want to thank all 12 of my council colleagues for signing on this particular piece of legislation, because again, this is definitely something that we have been trying to get through, and hopefully we'll be able to present our package and, and get some wins down at the General Assembly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no hands raised? Please call the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yep.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember McCoy?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 25-005, Agenda Number 0018, an ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement between the City of Wilmington and Axon Enterprises, Inc., for interview room equipment and related services.
I move that that be known as the enactment clause of the ordinance and call for the yea or nay... call for the air and a vote.
Been moved, it's been properly moved in second, that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question?
This ordinance authorizes the city to execute an agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., to purchase new interview room equipment and related services for the Wilmington Police Department for a period of five years commencing on or about the date of the signature on the agreement. One of the questions that we did discuss during the meeting was that Axon is the equipment that most other law enforcement agencies are using, and so we will be consistent with some of the equipment that we already have, and it will be consistent with other departments.
All right, seeing no hands raised? Councilmember Hackett?
Am I able to ask the sponsor a question?
Sure.
In regards to the equipment, could you guess give a brief description on what equipment that the police officer will be getting?
Remember McCoy?
All right, I will try to remember a little bit more about that committee meeting. All right, so this equipment is actually going to go into the interview room, and this will be more so video equipment and things of that nature, how that, the video will be stored, cloud services, and things of that nature. And also, I forgot to add that the fiscal impact of this ordinance is 138,324,48 cents, which is basically divided over the term of the agreement, so that is the amount for the five years.
Member Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I was at that committee meeting, and what I got out of it was what the chair said, but it protects the, it protects everybody in the room, so no one can say, they didn't say this because everything's being recorded, so I thought it was a good thing.
All right, thank you. Any final comments? Councilmember McCoy? Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declared adopted.
All right, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present on your behalf. Wait a minute. I'm sorry, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-017, agenda number 0033, whereas pursuant to section 2-363 of the city code, city council deemed it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant applications when necessary prior to council's approval by resolution.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
It's been properly moved in second, that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Yes, Mr. President, so this resolution authorizes the Office of Emergency Management Grant Application to the Delaware Emergency Management Agency for fiscal year 2024, Emergency Management Fiscal Grant Funds, in amount of 164,000 dollars. The grant will be used to support the operations of the Office of Emergency Management and the Emergency Operations Center. There is no negative fiscal impact to the city by accepting this grant, and although the grant requires a local match of 164,000, its sufficient funds are already been budgeted within the Office of Emergency Management for this purpose. This is something that we, this is a grant that we apply for annually.
All right, seeing no hands raised? Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declared adopted.
Nothing more.
Councilmember Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 25-013, agenda number 0034, an ordinance to amend chapter 48 of the city code to permit the cultivation, manufacture, testing, and retail of recreational marijuana within certain commercial manufacturing and waterfront zoning districts.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend chapter 48 of the city code to permit the cultivation, manufacture, testing, and retail of recreational marijuana within certain commercial manufacturing and waterfront zoning districts.
Second reading of the ordinance?
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Thank you.
Councilmember Field, presenting on behalf of Councilmember Cabrera?
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-018, agenda number 0035, whereas the city of Wilmington is an entitlement community for purposes of the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunity-
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and a vote.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first. That the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Mr. President, this resolution authorizes the mayor or his designee to file a second substantial amendment to the city fiscal year 2025, federal fiscal year 2024 annual action plan with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development that adds 350,000 in Community Development Block Grant Program funding for the first start homebuyers program using available prior grant funds.
All right, seeing, Councilmember McCoy?
Yes, this is a great piece of legislation, so glad to see the money moved. Unfortunately, because of my relationship with one of the nonprofits, I'm going to have to vote present.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other hands raised? Please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Present.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Present.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo? Seven yays, two present, and four absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Spadola?
Thank you, Council President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-019, agenda number 0036, whereas section 3-9-
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Thank you, Council President. This resolution urges the General Assembly to amend the city charter to make it consistent with state law. Currently, state law says that the mayor of other municipalities appoints their planning commission members, which are then approved by council. Our city charter simply says that the mayor appoints the planning commission, and we have no oversight over that. So, one, there's a consistency factor, I'm not sure the background as to how that happened, but two, very practically, yeah, two, we see many of the commission appointees come through Ethics Commission, Civil Rights Commission, it's helpful, so we at least see the names, we're familiar with their background, if we have a question, we can approach them. I think the most important thing, though, is currently as it is, when the planning commission makes a decision, it requires a three-fourth vote of council to override their decision. So to me, that's fundamentally anti-democratic, if the executive branch appoints a commission with zero oversight from council, but then the legislative body needs a three-fourth majority to override. So, I'm not going to go into specific examples as to what brought this up, but I think just the, I hope, hopefully I made the case, there was an oversight with staff, there were 10 cosponsors who signed on at the last committee meeting, thank you. If you haven't cosponsored, I would ask if you could, if you are interested in doing so, thank you.
Councilmember Hackett, followed by Councilmember Harley and Johnson?
Yeah, I would like to be added as a cosponsor, thank you so much, Councilman Spadola, for bringing this to the forefront, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Councilmember Spadola, for sponsoring this resolution, this is definitely what I call common sense legislation, and as you mentioned, there should be a balance of power as it relates to these appointees, and I think that it is definitely the right way to go in terms of making sure that council confirms, so, thank you, and I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I'm definitely supportive of this, I just, I'm not sure the sponsor can answer what the taken administration is on this, because this is one issue, once we discuss a lobbyist, this is one issue where we're technically conflicting with the administration, we're taking their kind of power away. And again, this is, makes common sense because of other boards we do, but, you know, this is something, if we do send it to Dover, we're going to have to deal with that potential conflict, so, I'm just pointing out to the sponsor, if he's already thought ahead there, how this is going to get passed in Dover if the administration does not see eye to eye.
Yes, Councilmember Spadola?
Thank you, Council President, I did share it with the administration, and I spoke with Daniel Walker, and he said the administration does not oppose it. And I appreciate that, I think they are really going, doing their part to collaborate and engage with this council, and I think that that's a testament to it.
Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President, I too would like to be added as a cosponsor, I think this is probably one of the, a piece of legislation that really does make the most of that sense, dealing with that planning commission can sometimes be a headache, so, I would love to have a little bit more understanding of who is being chosen before we get to that space.
Thank you. Councilmember Owens?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I too would like to be added as a cosponsor to this, and I just want to thank the sponsor for what I would consider some cleanup legislation to our charter, so again, thank you for bringing this forward.
All right. Councilmember Johnson?
And I just, for the record, I might be added as a cosponsor as well, based on sponsor's answer.
Thank you.
I, sorry, I just want to state for the record, those cosponsors, Councilmember Field, Darby, Willauer, Hackett, Owens, McCoy, Harley, Cabrera, Bracy, Johnson, and President Congo.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver? Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eight yays, one present, and four absent.
Declared adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-020, agenda number 0037, whereas the Wilmington City Council 2022 to 2025 strategic plan prioritizes a safe and secure Wilmington.
Mr. President, I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is simply asking the administration to really put some muscle into, looking into a take-home vehicle program for the Wilmington Police Department, specifically, it asks for them to conduct a cost-benefit analysis of it. Just for those that don't know, many police departments, much smaller and much bigger, well, there's really only two police departments bigger than Wilmington County and the state, they offer take-home vehicle program as a benefit to their officers, and many smaller departments do, and I think one of the reasons we're having such a retention and recruitment issue in the city is because we are not offering benefits that other departments comparable, and even smaller, are offering. So this is simply asking the administration to really look into it, see what the numbers would come out to, because then we can outweigh the hard costs versus the intangible benefits of keeping some of Wilmington's best officers. I have no doubt that there is a future Captain Rosario in an academy now, or with two or three years on, but is thinking about going to the county because they pay a little more, or the state, they have a take-home vehicle program, so this is something that will give a shot in the arm to the administration to show that, you know, it's something that should be seriously considered. Happy to take any questions, and I would also add, if you were interested, I would ask you to be a cosponsor as well, thank you.
Councilmember Hackett, followed by Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I do have one question, and I guess with the take-home cars, but I guess when I talk to some of the officers, they are surrounding the salary part, so like, what's your take on that when it's really, you know, the salary compared to the take-home?
Councilmember Spadola?
Sure, so I was just speaking with a high-level FOP person, and it's always money at the end of the day, without a doubt. If an office, if, you know, if you went to the FOP, if the administration went to the FOP and said, hey, here's a 20 grand across-the-board raise or a take-home vehicle, they'd probably take the 20 grand, but they're not, that's not, that's not on the table. The other, the other component of a take-home vehicle program that I feel strongly about, that is not on the police department side, but on the resident's side, is I think residents, 95% of residents like seeing a police car parked on their block, it provides a feeling of safety. So, yes, I agree, Councilmember Hackett, if it was dollar-for-dollar, they take the cash first, but this is something that, as the numbers work, I think it should be looked into.
Councilmember Hackett?
Thank you, President, I want to be added as a cosponsor because I totally agree as well, you know, our neighborhoods will be feeling safer if we had police officer cars flooded all throughout the city, and I'm hoping also that crime would go down because of that as well, so, you know, I want to be added as a cosponsor, but I also want to, when we get a chance, to also possibly look at the police academy and the tests as well, I've been hearing different things about that as well, so.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm certainly supportive of this initiative, I think we've said, if you look at videotape of prior, the past four or five years of police department budget, this has been discussed. I know preliminarily, you're talking about, you know, the fleet, it's going to be a million plus dollars, because what you're taking is, they have half the police cars they need, so now they almost need police cars for three-fourths of officers, so I think it's a fiscal issue, certainly I know Chairwoman Harley will address this with the department, I was told, again, we can see what the report says, that it would just be expansive number that the police department just doesn't have, so I think it's really a fiscal issue, but certainly I'm supportive of the initiative, but if it's too costly, I think we'll have to decide as a council whether this is worthy to do, like whether the cost of this outweighs the risk of just not having it.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, just reading this, the synopsis, it's not clear to me if the sponsor is suggesting that every officer have a take-home car, or, or, it's just not defined here, so, I guess, the cost, the cost analysis, I guess this is a question for the sponsor, is it to determine the cost for every police officer to take a car home? Is that what this analysis is for?
Councilmember Spadola? Do you want to answer the questions as they come, or just all at the end?
I'm happy to do whatever.
Okay, Councilmember Spadola?
Thank you, yes, to be clear, Councilmember Harley, this is not necessarily asking you as a council member to take a stand on it, yes or no, whether you want a take, a police take-home vehicle program or not, I think it's too soon to commit to that, because it is all about the numbers, so I would, what I would imagine the department, what they would do is they would, you know, one take-home car costs X amount, and then you could multiply that number by how many officers would be eligible for them, so, I think the answer to your question is, yes, they would determine the number for every officer, but that doesn't mean that's what's going to be, to be implemented.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yes.
Mr. President, yeah, so I do think that that is definitely going to be a big, major determinant factor, how many vehicles we're talking about, so that's why I wanted to know, but I get what you're saying, this year is just supporting the analysis.
Correct, thank you, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I see where the sponsor's going with this, but I do see a fiscal impact, I mean, if you start allowing every police officer to take a car home, I think we should have the finance chair take a car home, I think the-
I think the President pro, I think Chris, I definitely deserve a car. I think Akira deserves a car, and I want to say Mary Bell, but Maria, I mean, Alina, definitely Chief of Staff. I just thinks this, and I don't think it's a bad idea just to get, I guess, just to see a plan, you know, just to, I guess it's just to see if we can get a plan, recommendation, I'm sorry. But, this can go on and on and on. I mean, what makes their job any different than my job or council members, the way we run around and take care of the city? I just think it opens a can of worms, and I think it would be a financial impact. If nobody deserves a car, I think Akira deserves a car. Y'all deserve a car, with Oprah Sachs, I'm sorry. But, no, for me, I wouldn't vote on this. I just think it opens a can of worms. I think it's a good, a goodwill piece of legislation, good intent, but for me, I just think, you know, everybody should have a car at this point, especially me.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Owens.
Yes, I have a few questions on this. One, what is our current program right now for take-home cars?
Do you want me to answer? I see higher-level officers and detectives with them. The specifics, I do not know.
Okay. From my understanding, sorry, Council President, can I?
Yes, Councilmember.
From my understanding, this would be a significant financial burden to the city. One, to not only increase the amount of cars that we need to accommodate for this, but then also increase fees and maintenance. Gas prices are going up as well, too, which would be something that would be put on the taxpayers. And for every $400,000 that we have to pit out, that's another 1% tax increase on the residents of the city of Wilmington. I remember last year, under the 108th and under the former mayor's administration, we had a very long, multi-meeting debate about residency, where it was stated multiple times, individuals didn't want to have to live in a city of Wilmington. So, I think individuals, if this was to pass and go forward, it should only be Wilmington-based individuals. If you live outside the city, we should not have to be paying for gas for you to travel over to South Jersey or wherever you may live. So, again, I just say we have to be fiscally responsible. We are losing some dollars from the federal level. We do not want to continue to raise taxes on our citizens, and we have to be very good storts of our dollars, our taxpayer dollars here in the city of Wilmington. Again, I think our Wilmington Police Department does a great job, but unfortunately, I won't be supporting this tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hackett.
Yeah, I just want to state, you know, a few things. You know, we look at the Wilmington Police Department, and, you know, we talk about, you know, the fiscal impact that it can have. But, you know, we're sitting here and they're saying that, hey, we need help with recruitment. We need help with so many different things across the board for, you know, county has this, state has this, and we're losing officers. Our recruitment classes are not coming in the way they used to come in. So, we're trying to figure out a way to retain and keep people in the city of Wilmington, because the number-one job here is to make sure that everybody in this city is safe. So, we don't have officers, and we're not appealing to the officers, and then the city's not safe. We'd be sitting in a situation five to 10 years from now, trying to figure out, hey, listen, how did we get here? So, you know, my thing is, you know, I believe that we need to figure out, maybe take-home cars might not be the thing that gets officers to stay here, but we got to figure out something to keep our officers in Wilmington and recruit better as well, so.
Councilmember Spadola, did you want to?
No, just to close out, whenever.
Okay. Councilmember Owens, followed by Councilmember Johnson, Oliver, and McCoy.
I do agree with you that recruitment has been an issue. It has really been an issue nationwide since 2020. But, I would like to say, if you are looking at how we can better recruit individuals, whether it's for the police department or any city position, workforce housing that's affordable to our individuals who want to come and work here and live here and grow their life here past that five years, is the best way to do it, right? It's also the best way to set them up to succeed here, and I think that would be a better option than putting money into vehicles that have a very fast depreciation and will only cost us more money over time. Like I said, this is about being good storts of taxpayers' dollars. This is about making sure that we're putting the money in the right place. And if I remember right, I don't have my budget book in front of me, this department's budget is one of the larger departments when it comes to the impact on our budget. So, again, we have to do better as a city, and also, look at how we can continue to attract people here. And I think housing is a better way to do that, not vehicles that will just cost us a lot on the whole end. We can stabilize our neighborhoods, we can bring people in, live next to your neighbors, live in the city in which you work with, the people you protect. I think that goes a longer way of building community relations and really building a bond with the city of Wilmington that I love so much, that I came back to, that a lot of us still, you know, we want to be here, we want to serve our community. I think that is a very good option, and it's better than just getting a car that you can drive out the city with.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to ask one question to Councilman Spadola. Whether or not the strategic plan that you talked about, do you believe that they're capable of doing it in-house? Or is it going to cost us any money just to get that information?
Councilmember Spadola.
So, are you asking the analysis?
Yeah, you know.
Analysis itself?
Okay, so you said it in-house?
No, I'm asking, are you asking if the analysis to come up with the number would cost money in and of itself?
I'm sorry.
I guess I'm unclear, your question.
Okay, so my question was whether or not this strategic plan, you know, to prioritize, do you believe that we'll be able to just get this plan together or get that cost analysis in-house? Do we have to farm it out for anybody just to find out what that number is?
Councilmember Spadola.
Okay.
I understand. I think this could be done in-house. I think Rob Winkler, he's an Excel spreadsheet guru, it could take him a couple hours of work.
Okay. And Matt Powell?
Sure.
So, I just want to state that I definitely understand what everyone's going to when it comes to looking at where we are with the budget. But, this is basically a question that can be answered in-house. We need to start finding different ways how we incentivize and making certain that we are digging outside the box. Even though this may not be the answer, we have to figure out what we can do when it comes to recruitment. If this is something that just can be taken place in-house, it wouldn't hurt to be able to have that information. And if we don't use it this, at this point, it may have to be a few years down the road when we finally have funds that we feel are capable or ever get federal grants again. But, I don't think that this is that big of an issue if we're able just to get these numbers in-house. I don't think that that's too big of an issue. And I will go ahead and just, and support it, because I would like to know what the number is. One of the things that we did talk about previously at the meeting was the fact that we definitely were like, no, if you're not going to live in Wilmington, why should you get a car? So, that was actually one of the things we actually stated there. So, just trying to figure out what that would look like is one thing. We just wanted to know what the number is. So, I was like, I'll support it for the number.
Yeah, also, I guess, I think I want to try to remind councilmembers that this is just an ask so that they can do an analysis. I'm not sure that it would even come back to us to even vote on if they decide to move forward with it. So, I just don't want that to be, kind of, you know, to muddy the water. I believe that the sponsor just wants to, the administration, just to see if it makes sense. And that could be, you know, financial sense, does the FOP even want it? You know, get a sense, you know, for feedback from the community as well as from council. But, it's not something that we would ever, you know, vote on, it wouldn't come back to us, if I'm correct. Councilmember Oliver.
Okay. Lastly, I just wanted to say, I heard Councilwoman McCoy asked a question, and as you said, I think all this goes together. It's just a resolution, this is a suggestion, but he said he would, he thinks it could be in-house. He didn't say it would be in-house, so she made it as if it would, is in-house. But nevertheless, I think this is also about just giving police cars to everybody. And once again, if that's the case, you know, you get a car, I get a car, everybody gets a car. But, I do get it just to find out if it is, because this is just a resolution, it's just a suggestion, so I'm not going to go any further with it. Thank you, Mr. President, for clearing that up.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, the only question that I have right now for the sponsor is, do we know if the, I mean, has this request been made by a number of officers? I mean, do we know that this really is something that they really want?
Good question.
Councilmember Spadola.
Thank you. Can I close out and start with that question? Or should I?
Do any other councilmembers have any questions about the resolution? All right, if not, yes, Councilmember Spadola.
Thank you. To your question, Councilmember Harley, yes, I've spoken with high-level FOP folks that are interested in it, and many officers on the street as well. And I think any officer, anywhere, is interested in it. To Council President Congo's comments, I agree 100% in terms of a vote. I think the only, technically, we'd vote for or against it in the budget, but otherwise, it wouldn't be a separate ordinance, I don't think, unless it was a budget amendment. To Councilmember Oliver's perhaps facetious suggestions about everyone getting a car, the reason we're talking about the police department specifically is because this is what is offered by police departments to recruit and retain officers, and it's something we're lacking. So, in terms of Councilmember Owens' comments about the cost, I hear you, I'm sympathetic. But, I would also say not so fast, in the sense that I think we need the analysis to get done. You read about departments that have take-home vehicle programs, they almost view them as a cost saver. If you own something and you take it home, you're going to take much better care of it than the car you're locking in at the night. You're throwing the key, and it's on the road, you know, another 12 hours. So, you're going to drive it safer as well, because you don't have to wait two, three months to get into one. So, I think there's a lot of intangible benefits, as well as possibly direct cost savings from it. But, again, it's too early to tell, and this is just to look into that. So, thank you. And also, in terms of the residency, it's entirely feasible that if the administration were serious about it, they could develop a policy that maybe it is only for, to encourage residency after the, to encourage residency period. Thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Seven yays, two nays, and four absent.
Declared adopted. All right, we will move to petitions and communications. Going to start with Councilwoman Harley, who has a communication to be read into the record. Yes.
Script for the communication.
Circle back, circle back, okay. We're going to begin with Councilman Owens.
Yes, starting on April 4th, there will be a scholastic book fair being hosted at the Pal 3707 North Market Street. It is open to the public. Feel free to stop by, that goes until the 11th. Also, this Saturday, my fellow Councilman, Councilman Hackett and I will be taking a group of city youth up to the Philadelphia 76ers game, and we look forward to doing more events like this in the future. That is all I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April the 22nd, at the Hope Commission, I will be hosting a, with Don Mar Power and myself. They will be out to make adjustments on individuals' bills, make payment arrangements. That's going to be at the Hope Commission on April the 22nd. On April the 12th, looking forward to the cleanup throughout the 3rd District. We have several groups that will be participating in the citywide cleanup, we're looking forward to that. And one of my last statements is that this is old to some individuals, but I would like to speak about a lobbyist in Dover, Senate Bill 253, which Mayor Mike Pazicki and his administration, before they left, they went to Dover, and they changed the charter for the city solicitor. All persons appointed to serve as attorneys in the Law Department shall attain tenure among three years continuously, full-time services, which I don't think is a bad thing, but I'm putting in a piece of legislation to say anything that is, and I think it's a shame that we as councilmembers, Council Darby and Johnson have been talking about this for a while, about a lobbyist. So, the charter was changed, most of us didn't even know about it, and I think it's, I think it's a tragedy. I have nothing against the Law Department, I love most of the Johns and everybody who works over there, but what makes their craft so different than that, the three years, when we, most people in the city, you have to work at least five years to get vested in the city. And to be honest, I would address this Chief of Staff, I would like to, for councilmembers to even meet some of the Law Department employees, because we don't even know them. So, you have people that's working for not just the mayor, the administration, the city council, and we have never even met them. And the mayor and his administration, the previous mayor, went down there and did a charter change, and you could see who were the sponsors of it, and they didn't even, and I think it's a shame, they didn't even reach out to any councilmembers. I mean, I go to Senator Lockman's meetings, Senator Bowden lives around the corner from me, and Senator Chococa lives over in the 1st District, and none of them even wrote a letter or reached out to leadership. And I say this in all sincerity, that, you know, we are a body, we are council, and we should be respected as so. So, if there's a charter change, I think at least leadership, the president, should have been notified. They said something about it after I did my investigation, somebody said something in the budget here where it was set just gradually. So, we didn't even know. Now, whoever comes in, which is fine, maybe they did it to increase, you know, people to come in the Law Department, whatever the case may be. When I was down there, I just thought it was sad that somebody, you know, said something to me about it, and I didn't even know about it. And I'm a councilperson, a senior council legislator, and I don't think it's fair that they go and make charter changes, and it relates to council, and we didn't even know about it. And I know the majority, if somebody heard it, maybe one or two, majority of us did not know that they made a charter change before they left, that if you were, come onto the Law Department after three years, you are vested in. And I think that's a shame, not that it's a bad idea that we didn't know about it, that's my issue, because I believe in us as a body should know what's going on, and I take that seriously. So, I am putting in a piece of legislation, and I've called all three sponsors and let them know. I thought it was very disrespectful to Session 108, and hopefully Session 109 will pay more attention to what's going on and do not allow these type of things to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley, you need some more time to get things together, Councilwoman.
I'm ready, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Harley.
Okay. Mr. President, I have a communication for the clerk to read into the record.
March 20th, 2025, Honorable Michelle Harley. Dear Councilwoman Harley, by way of this letter, you are hereby advised that Richard Abbott Esquire of Abbott Consulting Services, on behalf of Shamrock III.
I move the communication be received, recorded, filed, and referred to the Planning Commission.
Second.
All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carried. Any communications?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that on April the 10th, there is going to be a town hall meeting. Mayor Carney is having a town hall meeting at the Wilmington Public Library for the 3rd and the 4th District on April the 10th. I believe it starts at 5:30. And I just got the communication today, and I just wanted to make sure that the communities, the civic associations that are in the 3rd District... to make sure that the communities, the civic associations that are in the 3rd District, that are in the 4th District are aware of this particular town hall, the focus is the budget. I know that there was a town hall meeting, we had one in February, but this particular town hall, the focus is around the budget, and I want to encourage the residents that live in South Bridge on the east side, at the riverfront, Trinity vicinity, Midtown Brandywine, over on north side, and all the different areas and prices run area, so this is for 3rd and 4th, not just for the 4th, but also for the 3rd and the 4th. And again, it's going to be on April the 10th, at the Wilmington Public Library, and for those that are listening to this announcement, if they have any questions, they can reach out to 302-519-5974. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So I would like to announce that Mayor Carney is going to be giving his, like he's on the tour of the city. On April 8th, he's going to be at the Claymore Senior Center in the 6th District from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. I do believe that, what he'll be discussing is, I guess, basically his thoughts on why he's, you know, the, the budget, and, you know, the decision that he's been making. And then, I guess, want to hear from the community, how they feel about some things. So that's going to be on Tuesday, April 8th. Then on Wednesday, April 9th, Brown Town Community, Brown Town Community will be having their meeting at 804 Merlin Avenue, which is the firefighters' hall. That meeting begins, is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They're going to have a lot they're going to be discussing, and also, we'll get a chance to introduce Captain Art Gleam. He is the gentleman who is going to be replacing, or filling the shoes of our dear Captain Rosario. So I look forward to actually getting a chance, I've already spoken with him, I look forward to actually getting a chance to lay eyes on him, and see how, you know, we're going to work together. So that is going to be on Wednesday, April 9th, at the, what is it, 804 Merlin Avenue, 6 to 8. Byard Square is also having a meeting on April 15th. Their meetings always start at 7:00 p.m., 701 Clayton Street, which is at the William, I'm sorry, no, at the Turner Center. So Byard Square, they definitely have, they want everyone to come out, because there's been some issues about their community-made dog park, and we want to definitely hear from people, and how they feel about what's next at Camby Park. Same day, I'm be busy, y'all. Hedgeville Civic Association is going to be having their meeting on April 15th, at 1009 Sycamore Street, which is actually MSK Community Center, and that meeting normally starts around 6:30. And they have, we've been really doing a great job, Evanna's been doing a really great job of making sure more and more people are knowing about this meeting, these meetings are really starting to grow. I just want to state one thing, April 12th, we're all going to be participating in the citywide cleanup, so each of those different civic associations, if you need to find out what's going on in your area, just get onto the Facebook, or give a call to our number, and then they'll patch you into me. That number is 302-576-2140, and that way you can get a chance to participate in 6th District cleanup, because every community's going to be involved.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind the community that our next budget hearing is going to be on Monday, April the 7th, at 4:30 here, at the Lewis L. Redding County Building, City County Building, and the topics for that budget hearing is going to be around revenue projections and the Finance Department. So those are the two topics on Monday, April the 7th, at 4:30. And I also want to add that the town hall meeting at the Wilmington Public Library is going to be starting at 6:30. I just wanted to correct that time, I said 5:30, it's going to be 6:30 at the Wilmington Public Library. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
First, I would like to encourage everyone to attend those town halls. Last week, one was held for the 7th and 8th District with Mayor Carney. It was very informative, very well-attended, I know Councilman Hackett was there as well, in his way, you know, for you to ask the administration. So I, credit to this administration for doing this. We didn't have that kind of access before, neighborhood meetings and town halls, so we appreciate the work by the Carney administration. And one housekeeping note that goes along with Chairwoman Harley is, the marijuana legislation is tentatively scheduled to be April 16th, it will be combined, the, the same evening of the budget meetings. So we will have an official announcement soon on that, but it'll be Wednesday, April 16th. As always, please let City Council know if there's any questions or concerns with the ordinance as we move forward. And I would like to thank everyone across the city who is, this, giving me healing prayers and thanks after my surgery, I still have the boot on, but I am on the road to recovery, so thank you, everyone, you'll see me around.
All right, thank you. Councilman Field?
Nothing, nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Hackett?
Nothing for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Spadola?
Nothing tonight, Council President.
All right, thank you. Again, I would like to thank everyone who joined us in council chambers, and also those who are with us virtually. You're always welcome to attend any of our meetings, the official council meetings on the 1st and 3rd Thursdays, and also our committee meetings throughout the, throughout the week. If we can help you in any way, give you any guidance for any type of concerns you may have, please call us at 302-576-2140, 302-576-2140. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
To properly move the second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.